Yeah, we'll definitely mention, I'll mention the gala.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, April 17th, 2014. If we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll start off the meeting with the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve regular session minutes of April 10th, 2014, governance minutes of April 10th, 2014, and acceptance of warrants number 43V14 and number 42P14.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mary Beth isn't here yet, I don't know if she's coming. So we'll give her a few minutes anyways, but tonight is Rob's last meeting. So I definitely wanted to recognize his last meeting. He has chosen not to run for reelection for school committee. And he's going to put all of his energy into the planning board, which I'm sure he'll do a great job. But I just want to thank him for everything he's done for the three years that he's been on the school committee. I'll miss sitting next to you. But I am really happy because I found a friend.
Yes.
In Rob. So, and otherwise I might not have, you know, if we didn't, you know, start this journey together, right?
Yep, absolutely.
I want to thank you.
I really appreciate that and I think the best thing that I, you said that a while ago and I've remembered it since. And I think the best thing that's come out of this whole experience on the school committee are the friendships that I've made with you and you and you and you and you and you folks too, seriously. I mean, when it's all said and done, that's kind of all there is.
It's a group effort, right?
It was a, it was a hard decision, I want people to understand that. I don't, it was a hard decision to leave the school committee. But at this point in time, the planning board needs a lot of help. And I think I can be of more service to the community there right now than I can here. So that was why I did what I did, but thank you.
You'll do a great job.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We know you're not going far.
Nope, not going far at all.
Not going far.
Not going far.
So the committee did, we just got you a little something, so.
Thank you.
That's for you.
Thank you.
And Karen. Mostly for Karen.
I'll open it for you.
For, you know, thanking her too, because I know it's hard on the spouses.
Yeah, it's hard on families.
And the kids, you know.
It's true. I mean, you all know it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a family deal.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I was supposed to tell you all to talk fast tonight.
There you go.
As families.
Yes. I just left a baseball game halfway through. And it killed me to leave, but you're gonna do what you gotta do, right?
That's right.
So.
Thank you, Mark.
But thank you.
You're a treat.
Thank you. Okay, Mary Beth still isn't here, so.
So maybe I can talk about a couple of things I think she would talk about. I won't do it as well as she does because with her enthusiasm, enthusiasm, but she, I think she would tell us about Dancing With The Teachers. That was last night and what a trip that is every year. You know, so much thanks goes to Heidi Monjo and the, her friends that are, I didn't know if everybody knew that Heidi has professional dancing experience. So she commandeered a number of her friends, her professional dancer friends, to work with individual teachers who are brave enough to stand up and do it. And it's amazing because the, most of the people in the audience are the kids. So not only is it challenging to take on something like learning to dance if that's not something you have experience with, that in of itself, but then to do it in front of the children. The students is doubly brave if you ask me. But, you know, Guy Prescott was the, they did.
They were cheering, you could just, you could feel.
Yes, they did. It's like American Idol, you know, they got their, you know, the energy.
The affection and enthusiasm of the students for the teachers.
I hope it lasts. I hope it's a tradition that lasts. Respect for, you know, for each other and the kids. Guy Prescott was the emcee and Joe Patella and Carrie Donovan and Peter Lucio were the judges.
Oh, funny.
And this year they added a feature where they had three or four iPads in the crowd and so they passed them around and then people could hold up what they thought the score would be. I had the honor of giving out the trophy which went to Rudy Cudmore.
I saw that trophy today.
Rudy got a perfect score of 30. And she, she danced with Heidi's husband actually. And one of the special treats all, all the time with that is that while they're tabulating the results, the pros just do this ad-libbing kind of dancing. They play some music and they take turns dancing with each other and it's just amazing how talented they are. So that's always a treat. And they split the money with the.
Italian Home for Children?
Italian Home for Children in Boston.
Yes.
And there was a little presentation about it and it sounds like a great cause. And the woman that, you know, was representing it came there and spoke for a few minutes. And, you know, I think that was, it's important for people in the audience to know, you know, where the money's going as well as to support the school. So Dancing With The Teachers was a treat again and Charlie Mendez was there to tape it. So if you want to catch it on cable television, you'll enjoy it a lot.
It's just fabulous.
It really was fun. Also the GEF Gala, I think we should mention.
Oh, yes.
That was a lot of fun. They, they had the theme of, they were, you know, they always have like a little tagline. So this year it was, you know, we're bullish, you know, Georgetown's bullish on education. And they literally had a riding bull, you know, mechanical bull and people had.
Boots Gala?
Boots and, yep, and people had a great time, you know, it was informal, a lot of people dressed in western kind of garb. They made $27,000, which is wonderful.
Oh, that's wonderful, I'm so glad.
$27,000. And they gave out nine, nine grant awards and they recognized Virginia Berksen and Donna Tanner for the Golden Apple. Got, they got the Golden Apple Awards and Michelle Smith very deservingly got the Partner in Education Award. So it was really a very, very fun night. They're already talking about what they're gonna do next year, so that's all fun.
Well, that's great.
And then I think we should mention the middle school play. If you didn't have a chance to go, it was really outstanding. It was just amazing how dramatic the kids were, you know, for middle schoolers, it just, it was just unbelievable. And it was really all directed and supported by the, as the high school students. And there were, you know, any middle school person who wanted to participate got to. There were people who did the stage crew, there were people who played even more, more support roles. And then there were the people who did the main acting did a great job. So kudos to Carrie Donovan who, you know, has really brought that music program in a very few years, sorry, the drama program in just a few short years up to a, to a level where there's a lot more participation. And it's an avenue some kids can pursue that they didn't have the option to do in the past. So those are three things that I think, you know, were noteworthy that have happened in the recent, you know, recent, last few weeks.
That's great. I hope when Mary Beth goes on to graduate that there's someone else that will take.
Oh, yeah, every, you know, we've been doing it now for, well, I'm gonna say four years.
I think that's wonderful.
And every year, it's usually, it's usually someone in the student council, the president of the student council, but not always, I guess. But, you know, we've had wonderful, every year we've had wonderful representation, every single year that we've done it, so. Yes, I'm sure somebody will step forward.
Good.
And then I think that's, that would be a good summary of what we've got, some of the things that were special.
And you did, you did a good job taking over for Mary Beth.
Not as good as Mary Beth. She would've told us about what else was going on at the school, but.
I'm sure there's a lot going on.
Yes.
I'm sure everyone's excited for, for vacation.
Yes, and the prom will be coming, I mean, it's all the senior activities. In fact, the frolic, I was just going through my calendar for the next couple of weeks and the frolic appeared. So I think that that happens in the prom, the.
Oh, the grand march?
Grand march, that's what I'm looking at.
The grand march, yeah, May 2nd is the prom.
Right.
What date?
May 2nd.
Okay, so that's why it appeared, that the grand march.
So hopefully it'll be a nice day, because I like it outside.
Oh, it's so nice outside.
Yeah, hopefully it's good.
Well, we're due for some nice warm weather, so.
Hopefully.
May 1st will be the ticket.
I mean, we deserve some nice warm weather or is it actually?
We deserve it. It's been a long winter.
I know. Okay, is there anyone from the public that would like to discuss anything on the agenda?
Our loyal friends are here.
My friends. Administrative reports?
Well, Margaret, you wanna come up? Yeah. So, you know, earlier in the fall, we put together a little transition plan. Donna and Margaret and I have been chatting about it on an ongoing basis. And then I thought it would be useful for Margaret to come back and just talk now about, you know, kind of give you an update because we have had a lot of, a lot of movement, a lot of things are happening. Change is hard, there's a lot to think about. But, you know, it's hard when the train is moving and you have your jobs to do and then this is something else. But it's, as we agree, it's a very, very important, you know, it's gonna take, it's gonna really consume a lot of our time next year. It's really important to, to do this right. So Margaret, maybe just, you know, talk a little bit about, just give a few updates and then the committee can ask us questions.
Sure. Yeah. I have been working with Donna Tanner pretty regularly. We're in communication, talking about what's coming up, what's on the calendar at Penbrook, you know, planning the activities. So I thought I would just go through, you know, starting with a goal. The first was to work with Donna Tanner to make infrastructure decisions for next year. So toward that end, again, I have met with Dr. Tanner in the winter when we were looking at the budget issues. We've talked a lot about the arrival dismissal and I've also talked with teachers, that, that's a big one at every school. So we've, you know, I'm aware of how they do that. I've attended a meeting with teachers to discuss MCAS administration. Donna, when they're starting their MCAS, she gathers the teachers and again goes over the rules and how to implement that. So I was with her in that process. And again, I was an AP in a school where we did have MCAS, so, I mean, I understand the, the big picture of it. But this was to watch how Donna, how she implements the whole process at her school. I've met with special education facilitator, Sandy O'Connor, and special education teachers to discuss some of the programming for next year. We've met with literacy coach at Penbrook, Maureen O'Connor, and Kate Donlin, the literacy coach at Pearly, to talk about summer reading. So again, really, you know, we started that conversation in March where I thought it was ahead of the game and now like summer's right upon us, so we'll get back to that. And then after vacation, special ed teachers at Pearly and Penbrook are going to meet to start the placement process. And then, and then I will meet with Donna and teachers to continue that process. So then.
Margaret, just to say one more word about that, is that was the decision that you're gonna both follow the same process that you used last year in terms of input from parents?
Thank you, because I, we, we're very similar in the way we do that. We all, we both ask parents for their input, again, knowing, you know, tell us what you want us to know about your child, their learning style, friends that they get along with, you know, good learning buddies, friends that maybe, you know, they're good friends, but maybe time to separate them. And then we both say, we're not going to take specific requests for teachers, but just let us know the style. And so my letter has gone out to parents and I know Donna sent hers out in her packet also. So we'll, you know, get those letters in and then just, again, work towards that process. Become familiar with student data. I am familiar with the Penbrook School Improvement Plan. So again, knowing what goals there are. I know part of writing the new school improvement plan will depend on your wishes, you know, how you'd like to have that look. I've reviewed MCAS data. We are all in this district, still in the process of aligning units of study to the standards. And at our last PD day, that's, we, they worked that, on that at Penbrook, we worked on that at Pearly. So, and I do meet with Julie DeRoche, Curriculum Director, again, literacy coaches to continue that process.
Margaret, can I just, quick, I just wanted to go back because I, I know you're probably gonna talk about it somewhere else, but I just want to make sure it fits. So we talked about school improvement plans?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Do you want to just tell the committee that how you've met, you've been running the school, you've been doing joint school council meetings?
Yep, and that was on my, on my, down my list, but we can talk about that.
I think that we've been talking about how to align the school improvement plans, you know, so, you know, that, the first step was bringing the committees together. And then next year, it looks like probably the safest thing to do is look at the plans, see where they're common, right? And then write a joint goal about the transition. So the following year after that, obviously then you're putting together a plan for the new school.
Yes, right.
But, you know, it's hard to.
Sure.
Because there are many, just like our goals are many, two years sometimes. So Margaret's goals in her school improvement plan are two years, I think Donna had some two-year goals. So you, you don't want to be changing things in midstream. But, you know, Margaret's job will have to be to, it will be challenging, but she'll have to juggle a little.
Right.
Next year. So it'll go, it'll go, it'll be fine, but it will require some, some juggling.
Right.
Thank you, Margaret.
I will be attending some IEP meetings in Penbrook that are coming up for the spring. Again, again, looking ahead to next year, so I'll, I'll go over and start doing some of that. And then also looking at individual IEPs and 504s, again, as part of the placement process.
And Margaret knows many of the kids.
Well, that's, that is the wonderful part that.
They're coming up.
Right. The children that are in the fourth grade are the ones that were in first grade when I started. And so next year, those will be the fifth graders, so obviously I'll know those kids. And then they'll be the sixth grade in the new school. So I really am, I'm transitioning with the children and so I will know most of the families and the kids.
That would be a huge asset.
That was all planned out.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. I will say, it's a little heartbreaking when I go to Penbrook and I see the fourth graders and hi! And then they look at me and I say, don't you remember me? Not really.
What was your first year?
Right, yeah, and I. First grade.
Almost class remembers you, she remembers you.
Well, thank you.
She has some questions too about how you're gonna do things.
Good, well, good.
I'm sure they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can talk about that in a minute.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Build, build strong relationships with members of the Penbrook School Community. In December, I facilitated a faculty meeting just with the, the Penbrook faculty, just to kind of start that process of, again, I'm gonna be here next year, so this is who I am. Many people, you know, didn't, don't know who I am, so that was just a chance for me to get to meet them, very informal. I had asked them to just answer a few questions about what they loved about Penbrook, what they were hoping would remain the same, what they wanted to change, as, you know, every year things, you know, this works well, but maybe let's look at changing that. And so we just kind of reviewed some of those answers and it was, those provided the talking points of where, you know, I saw next year going. So that was good. Then last, a couple of weeks ago, we had a joint Pearly and Penbrook faculty meeting at Penbrook. And then in May, we'll have another one. And then Donna and I also hosted a joint parent coffee in February. And I will attend a June coffee in, at Penbrook, again, for parents that are transitioning into second grade. I continue to read, to meet regularly with PTA through PTA meetings. Pearly and Penbrook School Councils have met together, just as Carol said, we've done that now two months in a row. And the, my school survey was all about the transition. And that was actually a, Donna did a separate school survey, but then the one that I did was a joint Pearly-Penbrook. So it actually went out to parents at both schools. And so with that data, that will form the basis of a goal for our school improvement plan. And again, deciding if that's a joint goal or, you know, how that will look. Then I have attended a leadership meeting at Penbrook with the leadership team and Donna Tanner. And I've attended some of the celebrations such as the Olympics. I was at some of the festivities during the Arts Week. And again, as I had said, Dr. Tanner and I do meet on a regular basis and we talk on the phone. And then I am going to announce the news that everybody knows, I have hired an assistant principal.
We'll have her come, we'll have her invited.
I didn't know that.
Okay, well, I just, like, it just happened. It was a lengthy process, I will say. It's been for like two and a half, two months, a search, but, and really some awesome candidates. And it was really a hard decision at the end and that, that really made the committee feel like we had a really, we, we really found good people that it was so hard to choose. And I had narrowed the search to three. And a small committee and I did site visits at both, all three of the schools. And when I made the phone calls to the two that weren't selected, I said, you know, you're awesome, just, you know, you're great. If I can ever do anything, just at this point in time, it's just not really what Georgetown needs and not what I need. But, you know, another point in time, you'd be great, so.
And, and I was able to meet her this morning at your parent coffee at Pearly.
Right, and that's why I'm bringing that up now, because today was an opportunity. I had my regular scheduled coffee and conversation, so I thought this would be the perfect opportunity to have her come, meet parents. I invited Penbrook parents, Pearly teachers, Penbrook teachers.
Did you have a good turnout?
There were, it was, it was some.
Yeah.
And then unfortunately, there was a misunderstanding about with sixth grade teachers. I had invited them, but they thought I was gonna go there. I thought they were coming to Pearly, to the middle school.
Oh, the middle school.
And because there were two very small windows in the morning and then mid-morning. And so I just, you know, again, in trying to make these kinds of plans, it was just emails back forth and then by, by the end, they, you know, it was one of these that way. So her name is Hope Doran, and she's from Wilmington. And I've asked Hope to come back in a couple of weeks so we can have, you know, meetings with more people and.
So was she a principal, was she an assistant principal before?
Hope Doran, she was a sixth grade teacher, for 10 years, taught science. And then she was an assistant principal in a middle school, so very familiar with that structure. But right now has been an interim principal in an upper elementary, grades four and five. So it's, you know, what I'd said today at the coffee, she has strong curriculum background, very child-centered, but kind of that upper elementary sixth grade that, you know, that I don't have. So will be a good match for each other.
And maybe we can invite her to the next school committee meeting, just to have her come for just a couple of minutes, she can just meet the committee.
Yeah, that'd be a really nice idea.
And, and so even though it was a long process, again, it's, it's coming so fast, the end of the year. So I did ask, you know, that we'll have to plan some of these transition meetings and again, you know, meeting the children at Penbrook. So my hope is that the next time she can come to the district, we can, we can do that. Then the last one, become familiar with Penbrook School Community and Programs. Again, you know, I've already discussed the joint survey that was sent out. Then, not, not really related, but kind of related, about six weeks ago, I think it was after one of the building committee meetings and the survey that, and at our school council meeting where teachers and parents were really indicating they would like more specific information about the building project without having to maybe go on the site and dig down for it. So Michelle Smith and Barry Belanger and I met and, you know how Mr. Belanger is, you ask something and then the next day you've got like brand-new everything, which is what happened. The next day he'd created a website just for the building project.
Wow, that's great.
So it's linked to the district site and, and, you know, it's linked to my site. So, and then Michelle Smith sends him the monthly reports, which has updated pictures and the timeline of how things are going and he puts it right on and so now it's up and running.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah.
That's really letting people know, like, all the information, that's really good. I'll have to check that out.
Information is power.
Right. Well, again, just without having to, you know, everyone has a site, you know, building committee has a site, but it's, it's got all the reports and sometimes parents just want to go in, how's it going?
That site is hard to figure out and find the information, the one that's on Georgetown.gov or GeorgetownMass.gov.
Yep.
That one is difficult, yeah, I like our school sites that relate to the project.
Right, and then this one is right, you know, right in, so. And I'm sure I'm forgetting lots of other things, but this is the general, general agenda.
Yeah, I remember when you came and showed us the list, the beginning of the year, I was like, wow, that is, that's a lot, but it, it looks like you're, you've done great.
Yeah.
I mean, we have no choice, it's gonna happen.
Exactly, right, yeah.
The things that come up for me that, that I felt, I just wasn't clear about was, it, it sounds like you're becoming acquainted with the school and that's great, but it seems to me, and I've heard from members of the community, that there's some concerns about the transition. So transition is happening, is a big transition, not only a new principal coming into the school, but then the whole school structure changing, going from the second to five to K to six. And so, I know, I'm just wondering, it's great to hear, you know, from the feedback from the community, what do you like? What would you like to see different? But I'm also wondering if you're able to, if you've been able to solicit from the school building personnel and also from the community at large, what concerns, what, what are you most worried about as we go into this transition process? Because I, I've started to hear, you know, rumblings from different parents that I talk to about, you know, I don't, I don't really want this to happen while my child is going to be affected. Because, and, and even as I said, like my own daughter, you know, she's like, well, we have a Red Sox, you know, Red Sox Day was at Penbrook this year, right? Was a big deal. Will we have Red Sox Day next year when Dr. Tanner isn't here anymore? Are we gonna be, and what's gonna? Are we gonna be, and what's gonna happen to the fifth grade play? Is it gonna move to the sixth grade?" And, so, I think kids are wondering that, because there, you know, right now, the kids who are at Penbrook, they see what happens. There's a buildup to fifth grade. And that's gonna go away for a certain number of kids, so. And then, there's, there's families who I know have expressed to me, "Well, gosh, the transition from fifth grade to sixth grade really didn't go that well." And, you know, "What's the sixth grade curriculum gonna look like? My kid's gonna be..."
We have to discuss that all next year. We are, that wasn't the focus this year, it can't be. We, we needed to just get this year finished. We also needed to respect Donna's last year.
Absolutely.
You know, so, so that is our plan, Alana, next year, we will do all of that.
I just think it's really important that, um, families are made aware. It's like, there's a, it's, it's amazing to me how people will assume, that if it's not being talked about and communicated to me, that nobody's thinking about it.
Well, honestly, Alana, but those are, those are the exact questions that were asked of parents and faculty. That was a part of the survey, "What are your concerns?"
That's great.
"What worries you?" And then, was it arrival dismissal, specialists, um, you know, celebration? So, that is, that was a part of the survey.
That's great.
So, my goal actually, at the next faculty meeting, is to take the lists of concerns, um, you know, ideas, uh, all those things and start the list. What do I need to decide? What can committees, because next year, we need to look at the committees at both schools, to bring them together. And then, what are the tasks that they will be doing? So, it is, it's the, um, it's the, it's the transition into next year, but next year is really the transition into our, into that final, you know, new school.
Yeah, that's really, you're right, a huge focus of next year.
I think again, though, it's just, um, it is amazing to me what people will spin in their minds when they don't, when they're not connected.
Yeah, and we do know that.
They go off on these tangents of fear and it's gonna be horri, like, it's just, it's so interesting to watch. And I find myself feel, you know, saying, "Well, you know, if you were on school committee, you would probably wouldn't have those fears so much, you would hear what's going on." So, we have the benefits. And then, again, somebody said to me, "Well, this sounds like a PR issue, they oughta figure out how to feed us information."
People, people, people have to be patient. They, they have to be patient. Change is hard. We'll never, we'll never please everybody, we'll never be fast enough for some people. We will tell people too much for other people. So, people, it's good you're bringing it up, because people just need to understand, we will have information, there will be opportunities for people to weigh in. It won't just be one survey that they might have missed. You know, we will talk about all of the issues. That's the benefit of doing it the way we're doing it, because Margaret has, even though it'll be challenging, Margaret and the new assistant principal will be working with both schools. So, Margaret hasn't even had a chance to enjoy every tradition at Penbrook. And nor, you know, is everybody aware of what the traditions are at Pearly.
Right, absolutely.
Right? So, that, that's, that's the work, that's the work. We're, we already are starting administratively to talk about those things. And we're talking about, just, just the sixth grade is an interesting discussion. Because, you know, is it gonna be self-contained? Is it going to be, you know, the, the, the switching of the grades? 'Cause that makes, uh, the subjects, 'cause that makes everything, has everything to do with which teachers come, because of certification or not. So, people shouldn't assume it's not being talked about, but there are certain things that need to be talked about in the infrastructure, which really has to be an internal discussion first. If people are concerned, I'd love if they drop an email, I would love if they drop an email, instead of chatting about it always at the soccer field. I'd love it if people would, you know, jot, jot it to the principal and say, "You know, just curious what's gonna happen." Um, you know, we, we will get stuff out, it will happen, and it, there's a lot of opportunity for people to weigh in and be part of it, including the kids. 'Cause we do need to hear from the children, what their, their concerns are, what their hopes and dreams are. There will be changes, but that doesn't mean they're going to be dramatic changes right away, you know?
And I will categorically say this on the air right now. I, I would have, I have no intention of changing, stopping, um, editing the celebrations and the things that bring joy to the Penbrook community. As I said this morning, um, you know, you, you can, you will never, no matter how hard you try, ever replicate exactly anybody. So, no matter how common a vision or you have with anybody, no two people are the same. So, you know, Donna and I are very similar in many ways, but we're not the same person. So, even if I wanted to do it the same way, I, I couldn't, because that's just not me. So, you know, some of it is, it's, it's trusting that, again, most families know me, better or worse. I'm not, I haven't changed dramatically, so I, you know, I, I am who I am, I, I love children, I, I know curriculum, I know, I know, um, you know, what I wanna see, and I know, I know what needs to continue. And, um, so, there, the, there will not be any drastic differences.
People shouldn't, shouldn't panic about that yet. But, you know, there may be ways to do it different. There's new, now there's new people that are gonna come into the mix, right? You know, maybe everything won't be an equal priority, you know? Maybe some of the activities may not completely be the same. So, we, you know, we, we can definitely lay out our plan and try to be communicating with people, you know, how, how is this gonna look? But, the, the truth of the matter is, is we don't have all of the answers that everybody's going to feel comfortable with right now. And, and it is not in our best interest as a district to make rash decisions with lack of information, lack of input, lack of, you know,
I don't think anyone's asking that. I think people are asking, I think the question more is, like, as people think about it and they think of the enormity of the change, it's not just that we're getting a new principal. There's a, there's a lot. And so, then, and then they think, "Oh, my gosh, are they thinking about this? Oh, my gosh, are they thinking about that? Oh, my gosh."
Honestly, I don't think it's gonna be as big a transition as you think it's going to be.
And it's gonna be a happy transition in many ways. I mean, it's gonna be very exciting when that new building.
Teaching and learning is still gonna happen at the appropriate levels. Curriculum is still gonna be lined up the way it's been lined up. It's, it, this is all part of the process. You know, we've spent seven years getting to the place we are now, okay? And, so, things are going to connect, right? There has to be some leap of faith here on some people's part, you know? There were doubting Thomases when I took over seven years ago. The administrative team and I have met, you know, people say, "I didn't think you'd do that, I didn't think you'd get that done." Well, you, you, you know, I get it, you know, there was no track record, but I think we have a bit of a track record now. So, I'm, I'm hoping that people will bring their concerns forward and their questions forward.
I think questions are always welcome.
But, we love questions. Questions are welcome. In fact, we'd rather have the questions than try, try to guess what's on people's minds.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And the change is a constant anyway, because you're always having new children coming into every, you know, grade, the grade configuration with different needs. You know, some of them, one year may absolutely love a particular after-school activity or a particular celebration, but a new set of children that come along may not feel exactly the same way. So, there's always change happening, that there needs to be, you know, constant communication between parents and families and children and administrators and teachers and, and, you know, the more, the better. The website is going to have to evolve at some point too, because we have a Penbrook page.
That's right.
And we're still gonna have a Pearly, I mean, Pearly is obviously, you know, yeah, going to be a preschool. But, the nature of it will change and, you know, people can stay tuned to that too, because there's always good information on that website.
And, you know what, we, we have great people, you know, here, and, and they will always put what's best for kids first, you know? And, um, you know, there's bumps along the road, it's not gonna be completely smooth sailing. I don't know of a change that I've ever thought of that it has been, but at the same time, I think, you know, we, yeah, our vision is that this is gonna be good for the town, good for the families, it's gonna be worth the effort, it's gonna be worth the, mm, little struggles. But, if we, if we believe it is a good thing, then you can work out the logistics, you know? The work, the logistics will work out. Um, but I think it's keeping the communication open, which is what I take away from your comment, that people want to know that if they've got things they're wondering about, they should bring them forward.
And the websites are interactive, and Carol's blog is also interactive, so, you know.
And, and just, you click on, and then the email pops up to me.
Should feel free to ask questions or make.
Yeah, I wanna really encourage people to ask questions.
Suggestions or any ideas they have on the website, share their concern.
But, Alana did quite, when you started this conversation, you did ask for something too that I was gonna ask, is what do you think is, looking at everything that's gonna happen going into the, going into this transition next year, what do you think is the most difficult? If you find one to be most difficult?
Well, I, I sometimes joke, I joked at the faculty meeting, sometimes I think denial is highly underrated. Because I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not very worried. Um, I'm not worried. I, I think that it is, be, because if it, we plan it, if we are thoughtful, if we, you know, again, keep, keep the emotions of, uh, we understand this is hard, you know, we're, we're, I'm aware of that. Would, again, that could, time to develop the relationship of getting to know people. You can't just expect change, you know, go in. So, I think that, yeah, I mean, like, today, I, I thought I had it all worked out about, where they wanna go.
Well, the fact that there's so many of you, uh, going through the exact same stuff, i- is, is great. That you have this big team of people that, you know, you can all kind of lean on each other.
We are, yes, again, sixth grade, you know, Penbrook, Pearly, and so, I, you know, I always, Carol, people have, are good intentions. So, I know that, again, if I make a mistake like today, you know, with, "Oh, I thought you were coming over, oh, we thought you were coming over." You know, "Sorry, I'll get it right next time." So, I, I, I'm not sure what I think will be the most difficult, um, because I also think that the year will end, summer will come, I'll go over to Penbrook and, someday, and then there'll all be. It, you know, no fanfare, no trumpets, it, oh, okay, now here I am, the school will open, I'll be here, I'll be here. And then, so, you know, maybe.
It might be trumpets.
It should be, I'll count on that.
I think, go, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, probably things like, um, when, when I was a kindergarten teacher, there was one year that I had to actually teach in two different schools, because, um, the, just the class size. So, instead of having the kids, you know, bust over, they thought it would be easier to have me have two schools, two rooms, two everything.
It was easier in some ways.
And, and again, and it was, it was fine. I said it was like, um, if you've ever seen Twilight Zone where they're like, that mock town? You'd come into my room and it looked great, but you open a cupboard, uh, nothing there. You know, I'd bring over the paint. So, but, it's things like, ah, you know, "I forgot, I forgot the paper," or "I forgot the, yikes," you know? So, that probably will be difficult of, "Ah, the book, you know, I meant to bring the book." So, that, I can imagine, like, for me, that will probably be the most difficult.
I think the most difficult thing is managing the emotions that go with it, the sense of loss, the sense of, you know, balance that with the sense of excitement, you know, the whole fear thing.
Excitement and the fear, there's a lot of emotion.
You know, there, there are those extreme, those are kind of those extreme emotions. And, you know, I think what we know is we change beha, attitudes before, behaviors before we change attitudes. So, it's just like we talked about, you just have to go through it. You just have to go through it. And you have to understand that sometimes it's gonna be hard and sometimes it's gonna be easy, but it's gonna be worth it in, in the end. But, once people s- see things the way they see them, that they are not gonna be changed extremely, or gee, here's a change that might make something better, then it becomes the new reality, right? So, then the attitudes start to, "Okay, I can relax, you know what, that, I like what they're doing so far." That, they, they, they said they were gonna ask me and they asked me, you know? That's just part of the process, it's part of change.
Yeah, well, I think it's good to have these conversations, right, to have them as publicly as possible. Because I, you know, I, I do think there's people out there going, "Yeah, oh, my God." And, "No, but, but I'm little old me and I don't know how to get my voice in the conversation, or if I want my voice in the conversation, but I'm freaking out." Yeah, I think there's a, I, I'm just starting to, the, the level of emotion, it's just, it's very interesting.
It's transition. We see it all the time, with, you know, when you're making a change, teacher, teachers feel that same thing.
And I think parents have to deal with it every year, your kids are growing up and that's not gonna just be like.
Some people have been at Pearly their whole career, you know, and I love that environment, you know?
Quick suggestion is, I'm a scrapbooker and I take pictures of everything. And, you know, believe it or not, I'm actually going, I'm gonna miss, I already miss a lot about Penbrook, 'cause I don't have children in it anymore. But, those colored pipes, you know.
I hate those colored pipes.
I'm sorry. A lot of people have asked about those colored pipes, I don't like them either.
The colors pipes are, are, have to do with the function of the pipe, right.
Yeah. And then, so when people wanna look at the pictures, they can open the book.
Will the new school have colored pipes?
The kids do.
She was like.
The new school's not likely to have colored pipes, you can tell her that.
She was like, "What are you talking about? Those pipes, Mom, they're, they're, I love those pipes."
It will have colors, she will like the colors on the cafeteria floor.
Not everyone, but.
Tell her there'll be colors on the cafeteria.
Yeah, a lot of people do like them.
Just a transition scrapbook.
That you can put up on a shelf when no one wants to look at it, but you can take it down.
A Penbrook scrapbook, a Pearly scrapbook to have in the library for everyone, I think that's.
Di- digital, it can be real.
Oh, digital.
And, I just tend to build on what Carol said, last year.
Five minutes, ten minutes a page.
Last year, when the, when the vote was taken for the new school, there already was some of that feeling of, of loss. And, and so, and when I first came, you know, even a new, somebody new, it's not even has to be a loss, but change as loss. I mean, that's what we know. So, um, I al, I do know that everybody has to do some amount of soul-searching, grieving for, for the way it is, for the pipes, you know? Sad, 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 and then, maybe it's most important, I mean, that's, you know, but. But, I mean, I, I, but I'm kinda not joking, 'cause that is, you know, that's a part of it. You have to, like, name all the things, "I'm gonna miss that, I'm gonna miss that, I'm gonna miss that, we're gonna miss this." But then, once you go through that, then you can, "Okay, now move on." You know, we've, you, so you, you can't, you ha, you do have to go through that process, you can't jump to the end, you know, without going through it.
Yeah, and we're talking about transitioning for the community, like, bef, before the school gets torn down. You know, what some communities do is they let people go in and they let people write on the walls, they, you know, they, they.
Or take the pieces that they want.
Or take the pieces that they want. I mean, they'll, they'll be great, if somebody, if somebody wants a piece of the orange carpet in the library, we'd probably give it to them, you know? So, it's really, it's really about just planning those kind of activities that give, and, you know, when I toured, the people that went to the Pearly school in high school in the nineteen fifty-seven, fifty-eight, sixty-two, when I spent the morning with them, when they had their reunion, I had a blast. But, what was really cool is, they were remembering, all these years later, like, "Oh, that was the principal's office and I remember." And so-and-so teacher in sixth grade, when I was in seventh grade in science, this is the room I was in, and they had stories about what went on in seventh grade. So, you know, those things are imprinted in people's brains, you know, they don't forget those. So, you have to give them the opportunity, you know, to, to remember. And then, then it's time to move on and there's something great to, to look forward to going forward, so.
It's an exciting time. I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm very excited. That's good, yeah.
Well, thank you, Margaret, that's.
You're welcome, thank you. Thank you. Exciting, exciting. Okay, school reports, no school reports, no school reports, that's good. You know, this is a very small agenda, which is a good thing.
It's 'cause we just met last week.
Yeah.
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
We had a longer agenda.
We had a long agenda last week, remember?
And financial report, we don't have that. Um, subcommittee reports, budget and finance.
Really report on that one?
No.
We said it last, last week, we're moving forward with our budget.
Governance's the same, you guys met last week.
Yeah, we met last week.
Negotiating. That's going well.
Well, we're gonna talk about that tonight.
Yep. So, that's good. Um, PR, public relations, you haven't met since last week, right?
That's right.
Safety, no, you gave us the update last week. School building?
Nothing to report, nothing changed.
Oh, could I just ask, do we have a night for community information presentation for the, the middle, the middle-high school renovations? I thought it was gonna be a, a night on the week after school vacation.
I'm not, you know, I think Michelle was talking about that, but I don't know that there was anything formally.
Yeah, I'm not aware of a date that has been set yet.
I, I know they asked if on town meeting night, so maybe they, maybe this is part of it. They said on town meeting night, they were hoping that we would give a, like, a tour.
Tour before town meeting.
Before town meeting, so maybe they were thinking that.
But this is an addition, it was definitely the plan was.
Yeah, maybe they were thinking that that night, whatever you're thinking, there was gonna be a night and then part of that was gonna be a tour. But then, they also asked us on the actual town meeting evening, if we would offer tours before, which of course we'll do, we're happy to do that.
Right, right, but, I, I mean, I know it's really hard to schedule, so it's possible that they're thinking of doing the information meeting before town meeting, in addition to a tour, I don't know.
Maybe we should drop Michelle a note and just ask her.
And try to find out, yeah, okay.
And you'll need to have someone else from the school committee.
Yes, that's right, you have to appoint somebody else.
Yeah, I think we talked about that, right? Michelle had asked and Pam graciously, you go, you seem to go to most, to many of the meetings. I go to some of the meetings anyway and I, you know, I enjoy. So, is that something we should do tonight?
You should take a. You should take a vote on that, I think, because you vote on all subcommittees.
Right. Were you interested in that being a committee?
I think if you're willing and interested and want that, I'm happy to let you have a vote.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I would really enjoy it. I find it a very interesting process, and there's a lot of excitement in it, and, you know.
And you don't have anybody clinging to your ankles when you walk out the door in the evening, begging you not to go, so. That's my main, that's the main obstacle I have.
Different forms of expression.
Okay, so, the chair will entertain a motion then to appoint Pam Lundquist as the, um, new school building committee representative from the school committee.
Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, PM.
Sure.
My pleasure.
Very exciting, good.
Yeah, it's a good, it's, it's a good committee. Yeah, they work hard.
They certainly do, oh, they, they do.
There was a CPAC meeting, correct?
Um, yes, there was, yes. And Karen Low, Low, um, I don't know how to pronounce her name. Um, but, you were there, Carol, and, and it's from Dyslexia Solutions, she was from, it was a fabulous presentation.
I thought she said she was on Amesbury.
Yes, yes.
It seemed like it was a special model of working with dyslexic children that had to do with using clay, modeling clay. Actually, that was, that was, I found that really interesting. Where they, they make the letters in clay, and then they repri- they do a, a, in many cases, a three D representation. So, like, for example, they use the word "their," T-H-E-R-E, and T-H-E-I-R, and that, they spelled it out, but then, they actually, this particular model was, like, uh, they had a fence and, and a clay dog, as if the "their," T-H-E-R-E, was related to a place, right? And then "there," they had, I think maybe they had a dog, somebody was walking their dog, and, you know, was pointing, like, that was their dog, like, belonged to the person. So, you know, but that was, so the kids learned how to, it was really kinesthetic, you know, really, like, the kids learned, not just to see what the word looks like, but that, to actually look at it from the, understanding the definition, how it looked, how it visually looks, and what, you know. So, that, I thought that was really very interesting. And she, you know, she had some very interesting graphics of, like, when, when somebody is dyslexic, how it looks to them.
I'd love to have seen that.
So, um, you know, sh- she color coded, you know, certain letters that would be a, a problem. And so, she had this message, and then one of the things she did is she had the, this message that she basically jumbled up. And we were supposed to read it, and we were supposed to try to make sense of it, because we were trying to, she was having us try to put ourselves in the position of someone for whom it looked like that on the page, right? And so, it, I, I thought she did a nice job with that, helping people sort of understand the, the disability. And one of the things that she emphasized, which I thought was really great, is that it's, you know, that dyslexia, a lot of people think it's one thing, uh, you read the words backwards. And, and there's a, there was a lot more to it, and different levels to it. And she said that with intervention, when kids are young, that they're finding success with it being something that people learn to compensate. You know, they, they teach themselves, you know, how to not panic, you know, how to, to, how to calm themselves down, and have an approach to-
Alert and relaxed, it was, yeah, relaxation.
So, yeah, I, I thought it was very interesting, and she had, how many people were there, Pam, would you say? I mean, it wasn't a big, really big crowd, but it was, it was ten, ten or eleven, was it? I, I don't think there were, I think there were less than twenty, let's say, but, but that was, it's a busy time. Busy time of the year, so, yeah, I thought it was ve- I thought it was interesting.
Wonderful. So, what is the population, um, of students in our district that have dyslexia?
I don't know, you, Donna, do we have any idea of our language-based kids, like, what percentage of, of kids have a diagnosis of dyslexia?
Percentage of them?
They were saying national, nationally, I thought she said there were, there were like-
She said nationally, up twenty percent of people think in this primarily non-verbal way. And, and that's kind of how she characterized it. Is that they, they're thinking of pictures, and so, that's why they were trying to correlate the, you know, the, the picture of the dog with the, the feel of the words, so that, you know, the child would, or a person would connect the picture in their mind with the letter, the letters and kinesthetic.
So, you know, I mean, we have, we have a population of language-based learners, some of whom have dyslexia, right?
Right, it, it's probably about one in five that has the actual dyslexia that is.
Just seems like I've been hearing dyslexia a lot.
Because it's kinda like ADHD sometimes is. Sometimes it's like, it's a diagnosis that's, you know, because now they're-
Well, and there's language-based learning disorders, which, you know, people get diagnosed, so.
See, that's what I think is happening.
It's kind of an umbrella term for a lot of different diagnoses. So, actually, they almost don't use that particular diagnosis very often, because there's so much more to it, and if you can get more specific, why not get more specific?
Right. Yes, and so, it's like, a lot of things, it's, they're, as they're more, as they're, as they're looked at more, and they, and they're, they're diagnosed at a bit, a bigger level, then people, you know, get, they learn more about the individual issues that go with them. And I think that, you know, I think it was, it was a very interesting program.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Good.
I, I, I thought it was worth the time.
Thank you for bringing that up. It's been such an exciting week, I, I just, every night, something.
I know.
Great.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to old business, which is the budget.
Yes, I don't think we, I don't think, you voted on the changed budget.
We didn't.
Oh, you didn't? That's this time? Oh, God, my meetings are going together.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, that's-
Laura, we did.
Didn't we? Maybe we didn't. No, maybe we didn't have a number. I don't think, you know what, I think, Charles, right, we didn't have a number. We talked about, we needed to do it at this meeting, that's right, we did do that. We did say we have to, we had to vote on the number. I think, I think it's in the notes, isn't it?
It isn't, and plus, um, the selectmen.
What hun?
The selectmen-
Selectmen didn't meet till Monday.
Okay, this past Monday, just the other day?
Well, yeah, I, I wa- I went to the selectmen's meeting, but I didn't, I don't know that I heard that part of the conversation. I, I, they were talking more about the capital.
Right, but they said that you, you came back from the meeting and said that they were leaving the ten thousand dollars and put buildings and grounds, and that the only thing that they took out and put to free cash was the sick leave buyback and the retirement incentive.
Yes, so that's what that's reduced to.
Okay.
It's just taking out that, those two numbers.
It just seems like it's been such a long process, I think, this year?
Met a lot, yeah.
Yeah, we did, and then we were getting, so, okay.
We, we had more meetings with ThinkCom this year than we typically do.
We did.
But, right, so, this, I didn't hear the selectmen have that conversation, but I think I asked either you or Da- or Laura to call the town hall and find out exactly what the number was.
Janet Pantano gave that to her through MacFarrel.
So, that came, that came out of the budget. So, this is the actual number that you would want to, um, vote on for your budget.
Okay, so, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the FY fifteen
Thank you for going.
Budget of thirteen million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars for the Georgetown Public Schools.
So, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the, um, technology director, that's gonna start.
Yes, we, uh, in fact, we were gonna get, we're gonna get that posted.
Good.
It's posted, but we need the job description to, I thought you said you needed me to pare it back, Laura, is that not true?
Two pages long.
Two pages?
Well, the job description, we did. Yeah, well, we, we have, we, there's a difference between what you post and a job description.
Right.
So, when would this position begin?
July one.
July one is the beginning of the fiscal year, and so, that's right.
So, what we wanna do is take the information, the key information that we need out of the posting created.
Job.
Yeah.
And then hire somebody for July one.
Yeah.
That's an administrative, year-round position.
Right, that's right.
Isn't it?
We're very grateful for that funding.
It's gonna, it's, I can't, the few people I've mentioned it to.
The one district out of the forty that you got information from, and one did not have that position, it's really a basic.
It's gonna be an important position.
School district. We're very happy about that.
Especially these days.
Yes.
Okay, so, on to new business, um, superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, do you wanna do that, or do you wanna go down to your other stuff and then do that? It's up to you, I don't, I don't, I don't care.
Yeah, we can do that.
But some of these will be short, right? So, well, school choice might not be that short.
That's okay. Let's do that.
School choice?
Well, we'll end it with, with, um, your evaluation and the school committee's self-evaluation.
Okay, that makes sense.
Um, so, do you wanna start off with school choice?
Sure. Um, well, every year, as you know, we, the school committee has to determine if it's going to open any slots for school choice. And so, you generally ask us as a matter of process, as administrators, to, to look at the current enrollment, try to determine if there is a possibility to open any slots. And, you know, we've all kind of established a certain range of class size that we feel is within the acceptable limit, so that's something we always look at. Um, because obviously, our first priority is to our Georgetown families. So, you know, school choice is a lovely option for the people who have the opportunity to take advantage of it, but we don't ever wanna do it at the, to feel like we'd ever do it at the ex- at the expense of the education of our children in town, because that's our first priority. So, when we looked at the numbers, um, we felt that, uh, the middle high school, because we have that big classes going into ninth grade, typically, where people wanna come into a district, unless there are other problems that we might not wanna get involved with, they generally come in at the transitions. So, you generally would see people being interested in transitioning to sixth grade. Kindergarten is usually, and we already have a waiting list on kindergarten, two or three kids. Couple of them, I think, are faculty children, as a matter of fact. And then, um, and, and then ninth grade. But, given the fact that ninth grade is the big class, tenth grade is a little smaller, but we, we felt, and you don't wanna take students at eleventh and twelfth grade unless, because, first of all, they, they don't have enough time in the school. It gets into grades and credits and all that kinda stuff. So, we're not recommending for next year, taking any students at the high school. Um, at the kindergarten level, it's always a wait-and-see game, because Margaret's do it, will do the kindergarten registration. We already, we always look at our numbers of kids that are in our preschool, that would, you know, be moving into kindergarten, account for those students. And then, generally, the magic number, so to speak, is a hundred and ten students. We don't want more than a hundred and ten students. If, I mean, obviously, if they're Georgetown students, they're more than a hundred and ten, we don't say to them, you can't come. But, we would not take choice kids if it went beyond that. Um, so, right now, we haven't had the registration, right? We haven't had the registration. So, we have, we, we really, it would be a shot in the dark to say tonight, we recommend this many slots. And what we've had to do in the last couple of years is, we've had to wait until July or August. So, what we've said to families is, register your children in the town in which you live, and then, if we have the opportunity to do it, we will advertise the slots, and then, um, follow the law, basically. If there is already a student who is, if a student has a sibling that's already in school choice here, they get a preference. That's the law, okay? But, other than that, we, if we have more people of it, that want slots, then we have slots available, we have to do a lottery, and we do take that very seriously. Um, so kindergarten, not sure. Um, the places where we thought that we did in the elementary potentially have some pit, some slots are grade two. Um, those class sizes next year are projected to be seventeen students. So, we figured e- even taking five students, that really is one per teacher, one additional per teacher, which would make it eighteen. And then, even if you have students who move in over the summer, you're still in a range that's below twenty. So, we felt that that was safe. And the same thing happens sort of at grade three, although, we're just gonna be conservative there and say, you know, two slots. Um, the other place is sixth grade, the fifth grade numbers going into sixth grade, Peter has six teachers, as opposed to five teachers. So, those class sizes will be, um, nineteen to twenty, even with the new students. So, that's where we recommend, uh, the committee consider school choice. That will also help the budget, because as you recall, when we built the budget, we built it assuming we were gonna have, we needed ten, ten, ten children. That's not the position we really wanna be in, enviably be in, in, in the budget, because school choice is really not a source that you want to put recurring costs on and keep them there. We haven't had any choice, um-
But we, we have, I just wanna understand this a little bit. So, we currently have school choice students in our district, we know that, so.
They stay till they graduate.
Right, presumably, some will be graduating this year.
That's right, we figured then, we figured that this, we already took out the students that we know are choice that would not be there.
Okay, so, but that money that those students bring into us, right, because they're choicing in, that, so, there's a certain revenue associated with them.
There is. Not equal to the per pupil cost, however.
I understand. But, once they've been in the district, like, so, we, say we fill these twelve slots, you're proposing we have twelve slots. So, you're saying, so that would be, you know, if we fill those twelve slots, that would be X amount of money going into the school budget.
Will go into school choice revolving.
School choice revolving for this year. But, once that student becomes then a second and third and fourth year student in the district, does, is that the money that comes in for them still go to that school choice account?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
It does.
Not sure why that's, but it's-
It does, and, you know, it, when I, when I do that little report for you every year that talks about the students in and out, um, what you'll see is that that, that does, that's why we like to have student, student, well, a couple of reasons, we like to have students come in kindergarten.
Right.
Because then, you have the, not only the benefit of the funding all the way through, but more importantly, the, the child has the, the opportunity to be part of the community. The later people come in,
Sure.
you know, the harder that transition is for, for them.
Sure.
But, yes.
So, how many of our choice students would be graduating this year?
Two, two.
Two, okay.
See, when we were taking a lot more school choice students, we would have sometimes eight, ten, some years, well, you've got the reports.
If you look on the sheet that Laura gave you, in FY ten, there were ten, in FY ten, there were ten twelfth graders. Then there were eleven the following year, and twelve, then we went to five.
Right.
I see.
So, our, uh, projected revenue for school choice, you know, went way down.
Right.
I see.
And we, and that's our, that's why we're in a, the situation where we, we're saying, ten slots allows us to, to pay for the things we've got in there. And then, remember, we were also trying to protect some money in that school choice revolving account for some curriculum initiatives.
Yes, yes.
I don't know if, um, if, um, the minority here, but I have always had such a difficult time reading this.
No, I, I thought I could read it last year, and then this year, I was looking at it.
I'm just like, okay, school choice out, so that means we're sending, I don't know, I just-
Okay, so let me just quickly explain. So, if it's a school choice out, that means that those students are Georgetown students who have chosen to attend the other districts that are listed.
These are the towns that are listed.
That's right.
And these are the amount of kids.
And that, and those are the grades.
Okay, so, this year, for instance, FY fourteen, Winthrop, we have one student from Georgetown that goes to Winthrop.
In the twelfth grade.
In, in-
In the twelfth grade.
Okay, right, all right, see, that's the thing.
So, we have six students in the twelfth grade choosing to leave Georgetown, is that what this is telling us? And one's going to Winthrop, one's going to Boston.
That's right.
But then, how come sixteen are going to Triton?
So, that's not the grade level, sorry. So, six, six twelfth graders go someplace here, Amesbury through Winthrop.
Yeah, they might, yeah.
Yeah, but most of your kids go to Triton.
I see, I see, okay.
Most of the total. And then, it's the reverse down the bottom, tells you where your kids are coming from. So, most of your kids are coming from, uh,
Havil and Lawrence.
Havil and Lawrence, yeah, although only three from Lawrence.
Right.
But you see that, look at the numbers in Lawrence.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, fifteen, eight.
Well, isn't Lawrence stepping things up in there?
And you know, and, and that, that, you, you don't wanna take advantage of the misfortune of others, right?
Right, no, but it really speaks to, I mean, that's been a big story.
But we might not have had slots either, depending on our enrollment.
And that does happen. It does happen that we just, you know, some, what some districts do is they say, well, you got eight graduated, you take, you can take eight more in. But, we look at it based on where the, where our, our numbers are. We look at the class size, yeah.
The total numbers have been decreasing, except for FY fourteen, it started to go back up.
Are you, which, are you looking at Rob choice in or choice out?
Choice in.
Choice in, yeah.
It was going down, 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 and then it's starting to go back up again.
Cause those kids were, cause you had a number of kids graduating, and we didn't replace them. That, you know, we might have eight kids graduate and then not take any new kids. Cause there were a few, there were a couple of years, anyway, maybe before all of you were on the committee, where we just couldn't take any kids. So, we had ten, eleven, ten kids, ten, twelve kids leaving, and then not anybody coming in, so.
You had four new kids come in too, fr- from ninth to the tenth grade. See, last year, we had two ninth graders choice in. This year, we opened up tenth grade, and we got four more kids, and went from two to six.
Yeah.
So, is the next number that's gonna show up, is that gonna be higher still than thirty?
Depends.
Well, if we, if we, if we get, if we get kids that are- If you take the twelve kids in, it will be higher.
You take twelve kids.
If we get kids that are-
But, but that's assuming, though, Ra-
But that's assuming though, Rob, that parent, families don't make other choices and, and, and move from the area. Do you know what I mean?
Yep. I guess the only thing I'm cautioning is that, I, I think there've been discussion in the past about, as you had already said, about school choice and not relying on that as part of the budget. And there's a trend that's starting to happen again where it could be, it's going twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty, and then it could be going up again and you're getting back close to those numbers that we were trying to get away from. So, there's a pretty clear trend happening. And it's just something to be aware of.
I'm not sure I'm following you, Rob.
Maybe I'm reading the numbers wrong.
It's not a bad thing to have more kids, you know, coming in.
We just don't want to rely on it when we're making that budget.
You just don't want to rely on the, yeah, the funding of it.
And that's, that's, that's.
It would be better if we could spend the money on one-time expenses.
Right.
You know, but we have two point six salaries on it.
Right, so.
Plus athletics.
Right.
No, I understand, but I, I'm.
Oh yeah, no, no, we, yeah, I agree. If we don't get the enrollment, then we're going to have to look at making cuts. Because our budget is built on the ten more kids.
Right, and, and again, what we have to do is our longer-term strategy needs to be, you know, it's just, as you saw this year, everything competes, right? So we're trying to keep the budget increased to three percent, right? So, the goal would be to take, take a teacher off each year, right? So that you, you didn't have to. This, once it's in the budget, it stays in the budget. The hard part is getting it in the budget.
Yeah.
Right.
We don't generally cut a lot of things out of the budget unless we redirect funds and we determine that something isn't necessary at the same level, you know, that we had it. But, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Absolutely, that's a caution, Rob, absolutely, I agree a hundred percent.
So then the town of Georgetown pays, that's where the funds come to send the, the kids out of Georgetown to these other schools.
So part of the net school spending that they figure, you know, for the town, is the, um, money they're assessed from the vocational schools, which is considered, uh, exp- an expense of kids that go out. And the same thing with school choice. I mean, they, they are assessed by the town in which the students go for that, for the expense. And that's another thing, it's not just one flat fee. So if you are lower in per pupil spending than the place they're going, the assessment is on the, on the peer, per, like, never get that right. Per pupil spending of that district.
Yes.
So actually, yeah. Yeah. So. So that's where we are with school choice, that's, that's what we're recommending. You know, we're certainly happy to discuss it further.
And then July, you know, I guess we'll know more about kindergarten.
Yes.
Thank you.
We probably won't have to wait till July.
Oh, you think so, Margaret?
I think once we let registration happen, then, even though we always have move-ins in the summer.
Yeah.
Again, just, because remember last year, even at this time, I said, wow, it's really high. So let's give it time. But I think this year, we're not so high. So once we let registration happen, I think we'll have a better idea.
Okay, great.
No. No.
I think we can. Okay. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve twelve slots for school choice students in the following grades. Five students in grade two, two students in grade three, and five students in grade six. Kindergarten slots will be determined, um, June, July, July timeframe, when more information is available.
So, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And maybe we can jo- jump down to F? Because that seems pretty easy. It's declaration of surplus math and foreign language textbooks. Uh-oh, you're, you're being, Rob.
Textbooks.
Yeah, so let me find where I am here on the textbooks. Laura, it's in here, right? I just can't find it. Very, very, very.
Yeah, it was the last one.
Okay, all right. Yes, so these, uh, these textbooks are beyond their useful life, apparently, and they're taking up space. They're no longer, uh, being utilized. So, uh, Peter is requesting that, uh, they be declared surplus and, uh, freeing up some ser- some, some space in his storage closets.
So the chair will entertain a motion to declare the math and foreign language testbooks, textbooks identified by Principal Peter Lucio a surplus to be disposed of by proper protocol as presented.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last day of school, I think we, I think, although snow the other morning didn't make me feel completely confident, but I think we're beyond the point where we're going to have to worry about this. So, we think that it's safe to take a vote. Uh, we had two snow days during the year and then luckily, it, some stuff happened on vacations that, you know, were strategically, um, beneficial to us in that way. Um, so the last official day of school for this year will be Wednesday, June twenty-fifth. As a half a day.
And that's a half day. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to declare Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty-fourteen, is the last day for, day of school for all students.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It seems so far away.
Okay.
It won't be.
It'll come quick.
Do we want to do D?
Yeah.
Site work.
Sure.
Or, yeah, the site work.
Okay. And this is a middle.
High school, the stairs.
Middle high school stairs. What is the second to last? Yeah, so, um, I think at the last minute, last minute, the last meeting, I think Rob brought this up, he wanted to talk about it as an agenda item. And, uh, I was asked to give Mike Gilbert a call, the field rep from MASC, and regarding the question of whether or not, uh, a policy might be a good idea to, um, I think, Rob, your, your interest was in making sure that all proper engineering protocols were followed. Is that, am I representing that correctly? And, um, and I, I thought I understood you to say that maybe the policy would require a school committee approval, but I'm not sure. I, I remember the engineering protocol piece the best. And, um, so, um, and I know, I think, Rob, you said you have had a conversation with Mike too to clarify it. So you can certainly, uh, explain it from, uh, your conversation with him. But when I spoke with Mike, uh, he mentioned that it's, it's, it, there's a jurisdiction issue, that it's really an operations issue more so than a school committee policy level issue. So, he said that he, you know, he, he doesn't, that no one has a policy like this and he, and he wouldn't suggest that the school committee pursue that, uh, largely because of the, you know, the, the tasks that are, really fall within the school committee's umbrella. And that the s- school administration, you know, needs some, uh, ability to do some projects and follow proper procedures and profile. Personally, I said to Mike, you know, I wouldn't have a problem as the superintendent, you know, coming before the school committee when, if it's going to be a major project that's going to alter a site, you know, um, coming to the committee and just giving the explanation of what we're going to do and give the information. But our expectation would always be that we would work with the bu- the building inspector. And if it did, if it was a, something like, for example, the Pearly Ruth, we're working through the process of, you know, the engineer and the bids and all that kind of stuff. But out of Joan's office, a lot of that is coordinated with Mike's office. So, uh, do, what, do you want to add anything that, to that, Rob, based on your conversation with Mike?
No, I think that, I think I understood Mike to say the same thing. And I basically took away from that, that, um, any issues with new work that takes place, making sure that it, it is done correctly the first time and all health, safety, welfare issues are addressed, um, that it's really, uh, if, if the, um, if, if the highway surveyor is doing that work, there needs to be, um, a methodology that really is part of the town's approval process for when projects happen. That they happen according to a certain standard, a certain set of rules, a certain set of regulations. Right now, all the town projects don't have to go through a review that's required of a private developer. A town probably, Penbrook's the best, is a great example of that. And so, that issue needs to be addressed and it's almost outside of the school district issue. And, and I understand Mike to say that. And so, I, it's actually one of my goals, going back to the planning board, to address that. I still don't quite, I still see a disconnect in it, that even approaching it that way, there seems to be a disconnect with the school district, even if it's approached that way, which is what I'm going to try to bridge by going to the planning board and getting, um, getting this to all come together. So that when something's done in the schools for the schools, it's done right the first time.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we want it done right the first time, absolutely. We don't want to be, yeah. And so, that brings us then to the discussion about the stairs. So, um.
The memorial garden.
The memorial gardens, that's right. So, um, when the discussion happened at, uh, the FinCom regarding, uh, the capital improvement projects that the CIP had recommended for the schools, one, one of our projects was, uh, the heat pumps, which was for the roof, the roof pumps, which was a, oh, two hundred thousand dollar investment. And then the other one that was approved was this mo- these memorial stairs. And, uh, the chief, actually, the fire chief had said we had to shut them down. So it's, it's really, I think, representing a safety issue, even now, they're blocked off. I'm not sure people are being so great about not using them anyway. But needless to say, um, I was not at that meeting, we, we were, we had a competing meeting that we were at, but the chief was. And, you know, as part of that discussion, that, I guess, they decided to take out the, um, forty thousand dollars for the memorial stairs and use that forty thousand dollars to, to, uh, fund the heat pumps, but take less of that money out of free cash and then move the CIP money over to get the two hundred thousand. So I think they decided instead of two hundred thousand out of free cash, to take one sixty out of free cash and move the CIP money over forty thousand, and that's where they're getting the two hundred, which we do need those heat pumps. That, that's, that's, it is a priority. So, having said that, we still have this matter of these stairs that are n- not, not okay right now. So, um, following the meeting, the chief began thinking about it and said, gee, I wonder if we can't come up with something where we can, um, they may not, they may not be permanently there because with the turf project, there may actually be a set of stairs that's in a different location. So the goal here is to create something that's going to maybe be used temporarily, but something that's going to be safe, is going to have the appropriate pitch, you know? And so, what, what Donnie put in writing for me was what he has proposed to temporarily repair these stairs. Uh, it would involve, uh, Mike Anderson and, you know, some, some of his folks. Don, uh, Peter Durkey and some of his people. And, um, I think the chief is going to be involved to some extent, uh, with that. And they have been to the building inspector. Because when they talked to me about it, I said, you know, I, I hear Rob's concern about. I certainly don't want to put ourselves in a position where, you know, we fix it and then we didn't really fix it. You know, or even if it was just a temporary thing. So who in town would be in charge of determining whether something that was built was, met the code? And it, it, in my mind, it's the building inspector, John Mativier. You know, I've worked with him on a number of other things. And if, if John, I wanted John to look at what their plan was, and then if John signed off on it, then he would obviously inspect it in the end. I also would trust that John would be the type of, thorough, because I think he's a very thorough guy. I've worked with him on a number of projects since we've been here, including the roof collapse. And he, he would tell us if he felt that this required a, a lot, a lot more of an engineering, um, plan and all of that kind of stuff. So, what I'm giving you here is what the chief put in writing. And what they'd like to do is they, they would like to, if they have time over April vacation, I mean, that was the thought, is that we, and then we could get it open, get the, get the stairs open in time for the beautiful weather and, you know, and, and then, understand, we may make a different plan when it comes time to do the turf, the turf. But we, we just feel it's an unsafe situation right now. And, and they're not, I guess, they're, they must, they're, they're planning to put granite, the steps to make them granite, to lift them up so they are, because if you've ever gone down those stairs, you feel like you're, you feel like you're sliding, you know, forward.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're going to fix that. So, you know, I, you know, the, the building inspectors are showing me that this process is something he's comfortable with, that he's discussed it with the appropriate parties. And, you know, he feels that it's a project, you know, that would be an asset to, uh, to have those stairs fixed. So, our plan is that we would like to support it. And as I'm saying, I think it's important, you know, especially because I know it's important to Rob, but it, you know, I think it is always something that the school committee, you know, should be aware of. Right? Now, without you on the committee, Rob, I mean, with all due respect to the ladies, because I'll put myself in this category, you know what we're talking about. None of us are building experts, right? So if it's recommended by the town, right, and the due diligence has been had, you know, I, I think it's going to pass, you know, most of the time. So, you've been our, you've been our kind of watchdog on that, we appreciate that. That's, you know.
This is, so this is the first time I've seen this, I mean, I saw it a couple nights ago, but, um, uh, and this project that they're going to approach it like this, or thinking about approaching it like this. And I'm not, I don't have a plan yet for how to work this out so that it falls under a bigger umbrella to make sure that it's done properly. I, that, I, I haven't figured that out yet, but, um, it, it's not about reinventing the wheel. This is, this happens in other towns all the, and I have to do a little research. But, two questions that came up for me. One was, um, so why, uh, just a question. Why spend the time and the money to fix them on a temporary basis versus closing them off for good right now until the turf field happens and this other stuff? So do you do it once, do it right, do it?
Well, I think that, that the, the group feels that they want to have those stairs operational. It's also part of the memorial garden. You know, it's, you know, I, I think that there's, there's, it's, people feel it's a shame to not have the accessibility there and there. And if it's something that's not going to cost very much money and you're going to, and it's going to look nice and it's going to be safe, you know, I mean, these stairs are, are part of the gardens for people that, you know, as Donnie puts in here, I think very nicely, is, you know, it, people that think they're, were thought very highly of them. And so, we just feel like if, if it's not going to cost much money and, and, and basically our guys, you know, have the expertise to do it, that, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do it? If it were going to be a forty thousand dollar project, I agree a hundred percent, we would be like, you know what? We just can't make it happen.
What, what is the cost going to be on this?
It's free, except for, they talk a little bit about, well, let's see.
There are people dedicating their April vacation to this.
Well, the highway department and the facilities director, so I'm, they're, I had talked to Carol about it. They'll obviously be working, but I don't know how, would they charge us?
No, I don't.
Cross charge, or?
But the town's paying for it indirectly, right?
That's what I, that's how I'm looking at it. They're, they're indirect costs. And, and I didn't get the impression from what the chief was telling me, is it was going to be a, a cost for the materials.
So he got them donated, possibly, materials?
So, that's what he kept saying, Carol, you don't need to worry about this. This is not going to cost you money, this is not going to cost, you know, money. And I think, you know, his perspective is, we live in this town, you know, if we can do it and that we can do it in a very small cost and we can make sure that it's done, like you said, right, then the sentiment is, let's, let's do it. So.
So.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, the, the, the other question was, and I think.
Why now?
Yeah, and, and you've, you've answered that. It's just a question that I think needs, need to be asked.
Okay.
And then, um, the, the other, uh, question was, and I, I think it is, I think it's a small enough project and it's not very complicated, that, that it can be done in-house. But I think, um, I guess, it, it, if you imagine these stairs to be a little bit more complex in their construction, the, the history in Georgetown, the town doing its own work without a peer review and independent review of the professionals' work, it, there's been, um, for lack of a better term, there's been error after error after error, which has ended up costing the town more money and taking more time to do something. It's been less effective and less efficient. So somehow in this process, I don't know, I know John a little bit, I'm looking forward to getting to know, knowing him well again. And, but I don't know if he's a civil engineer or an architect, I, I don't think he is. And in, in designing public stairs, someone needs to take responsibility for them in the end, if there's a, if there's an accident that happens because of the design of the stairs. So I think these are so simple, like, you know, I'm okay with him saying that. But if they were more complicated, I think this is an example of an issue where the school committee wants to be, but it's also a town issue too. Where.
I think if we were gonna rip them out, Rob, and then reconstruct them, then that's where we would definitely look at a design. But they're feeling that, like you said, it's a fairly small project. It is gonna involve, you know, pu- pushing, you know, putting them up and, and, and doing that.
Is there a railing there?
There's going to be a railing there. There isn't a railing there, but there's going to be a railing.
A liability with it just the way it is right now.
And I'm sure John will take into account that the railing has code requirements that it extends beyond the lower landing and above landing in, in certain dimensions. So, you know, those things would be taken care of. And none of, it, it, all it is, is just to protect the town.
Yeah, I think if we didn't do them right now, because I've seen the kids and parents, like, you know, moving over the, the horse that was there and still walking down.
They're gonna use it anyways.
Yeah, I think, I think they will.
And it represents a liability too, I think, for the town.
Yeah, even in the snow, people were doing it, like, on the weekends at basketball, and I'm like, it was icy.
It's hard to get people to not walk a straight line.
Yes, they, yeah, they don't wanna go all the way down. Yes, it's all of, what, forty feet or something, but, but you're right, it's like, people are used to going the, the path of least resistance, right?
Well, it is very nice that the chief looked into this, and found the people to do it.
It was nice talking to her.
We, I appreciate it very much.
And he also talked about community service component with students, which I think will be interesting too, if that could be done, so.
I think a very gracious gesture and generous, and I appreciate it. I'm sure, I will definitely pass that on to him, and I will also, you know, make sure your questions are represented too.
Okay, snack break.
You're on, Rob. I have no idea where this is going.
It was, so this is my last meeting, eh? So we have this wellness committee, and we have, we have this new, we have, we have this new Heather, taking care of the program and doing these wonderful things. And, and this whole idea, this, this basically accepted idea that, that having something to eat, to begin your day, and enough sleep are two of the most basic components to, to learning, to starting the day. And even as a professional businessman, to, to watch how, now I'm speaking as a parent, but to my son Jack, to watch how he will get home from a practice or a game at seven thirty, eight thirty, then he will have something to eat for dinner, and then he will take a ten-minute break, and then he will start his homework. And he'll go to bed, let's say, at eleven o'clock, if he's, if he's lucky. And so he goes to bed at eleven o'clock, and then he's expected to get up with enough time to have his body clock readjust to some artificial schedule, so that he's hungry, he eats, and he's in school, ready to learn by seven thirty. And, and the, the human body just doesn't work that way.
The teenage brain doesn't work that way either.
Well, I don't wor-, I, I don't work that way, and, and, I mean, when I get up, when I get up early and I have to go to a meeting early or something like that, what I'll do is I will grab some things that I know I'm gonna be hungry in about forty-five minutes. And I'll grab some things and I carry them with me kind of thing. And so it was just the, the thought that came up for me is, isn't, can't there be some way that we can provide these kids the ability to carry something with them, which comes from the parents, comes from home? And maybe it's only five minutes, but it's, it's, it's a period of time that they know is safe time, that they're not gonna get yelled at for being late to class, where they can stand in front of their locker. And instead of horsing this stuff down, which is what they have to do, to just five minutes, just say, I got five minutes to eat this bar. Now, I don't know what it does to the unions, you know, all that stuff, but you just think there's gotta be a way we can come up with something that works for everybody, the teachers, the kids.
Now, Rob, does, does he feel like the teachers won't let him eat in class? Like, if it is something like a bar? The teachers have said to him that's, you know?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Because I always, like, a working snack to me is always, you know, like when you, you go to a meeting and you listen, but you have like, you know, whatever, granola or whatever, and you're eating, and I didn't know how teachers responded to that.
I don't know. You know, I, I, I know with maybe, I don't know.
I mean, it's not like he's gonna take his, you know, box of cereal and his milk out and out of his backpack and start thinking he can have breakfast in the front of class. You're talking about just a little, like, raisins or nuts or fig nuts.
You know, it's just a, it's just a snack of good food to, to put something in the system.
Well, I, I told, you know, I told you I was taking the notes for Peter, and I, I think we just wanted to understand what you're, what you're concerned about.
Did that make sense, how I described it?
Yeah, I think it did.
It's, it's, I think it's a vaccine issue in education, I mean, I'm sure you've heard it, Carol, that particularly when you get to high school, that the, that the studies indicate that high school students are really not morning, their, their bodies, their brains do not function well in the mornings, and we have a society that expects them to go to school and learn at a time when, I think there's a, there's a pretty significant body of data out there that says it's really hard for them.
See, I always thought it was either you're a morning person or you're not. Like, I have never been a morning person, whether I was five, whether I was fifteen, or whether I was forty-four.
One son is a morning person, and the other two are not. And he, the one who is, he gets up and he wants to go out the door and he says, hey, you know?
I'm going.
There are a lot of competing interests around how school days get organized. But I, I think, I think I understand, you're just, you're just wondering if there's some flexibility in terms of, you know, students being able to, I think, I think what we heard initially was that maybe, and this, this is why I think Peter went to, maybe the union had to get involved, was, I think he was hearing, so now build in fifteen minutes in the schedule, where everybody just is just wherever they are. And what he's basically, one of Peter's battle cries always is, I don't have enough instructional time, as it is. So that's, so it's like, you're trying to steal my precious instructional time. And it's, and that isn't what you're saying, you know, but I think at that moment, I don't, I don't think it was clear, so I, I, I think I can represent.
Wait, wait, also, can I, I'm sorry, we just have an issue, you were, you mentioned homework in here too. I won't go on to my homework. Right, but.
Barbie's favorite topic.
Right, but, you know, generally, if my children are doing homework after eight o'clock at night, the, the productivity, the, the ideas, the quality of the work goes really downhill. So I try to have them, I mean, I'm not always successful, I will, I will admit, but, you know, I, I try to encourage them strongly to finish before then. Now, there are days when that's just not possible, because you've got so many activities to do. But if the child, you know, really, it's completely impossible for him to approach homework before nine o'clock, I, I would consider writing a note to the teacher and just, you know, saying, I, you know, I'm sorry, but our, our family schedule did not allow that. I mean, sometimes you might, you know, that you just, there's no time, you can't. I mean, does that sound really radical, or, I mean, because they do, they need enough sleep, they do need to have enough sleep.
Yeah, but I wonder, would he go to sleep? That's the thing.
He wouldn't take the note.
Very well.
He wouldn't take the note very well, because it would, in his eyes, it would knock him down a notch with his grades. He's very, he's very grade motivated, and so he.
Well, I think there's also that issue of taking responsibility for yourself, and there's a certain age where kids don't want their parents intervening. I take responsibility for myself, and I have, I have a relationship with this teacher. And if you're constantly writing notes to the teacher on my behalf, you're undermining my efforts to build a relationship. And I think it's important that kids go through that in, in high school. Because it's really weird when you're a college professor getting calls from your students' parents, and you can't disclose anything, because, but.
Not an approach I would suggest in college, or even really high school, I'm kinda thinking more middle school here. Or, you know, but they, they do need it, and then I, I get them, you know, it's hard, it's very hard to wake up in the morning, it really is. And I empathize and I, with them, and I sympathize, and it's hard for me to get up, you know, and then, but I, you know, we have five or ten minutes where we have breakfast and juice. And I tell, I have known children who have gone to school without breakfast and juice, and the result is not always good. I mean, some I've known, at least two, maybe, that, that have fainted, because they, they had nothing. And I've heard, you know, one child fell off the chair and hit their head, their head on the floor, and I know that they had no, no breakfast, or, and I, I tell my, you know, so I stress the importance of breakfast.
So sometimes when these things come up, these little issues come up for individual school committee members, or, you know, the best thing to do first and foremost is to go to the principal. Just, just to raise it, because maybe there is flexibility that you don't even, we don't even know about, right? So Peter really feels bad he couldn't be here tonight to have the conversation. But I know any of the principals would love to entertain a conversation with any individual member or talking from the perspective of a parent about something that affects your child in a negative way. Because, you know, I mean, it won't necessarily be all parents who will feel that way, but for you, you know, as a parent, it, it sounds like it is something that, you know, you would like to at least put on the radar screen of the, of the principal.
It'll be easier to go talk to Peter now that I'm not on the school committee.
Yeah, yeah. And there are also children with diabetes who need to have food at a particular time, and you can have, you know, accommodations if a child needs to have food.
Yeah, no, I, I, I do hear that, I, I think all school, I mean, I've been in multiple districts now, and school committee people generally do feel that way. You know, it's like, I'm, you know, I wanna be sure what hat I'm wearing when I go in, and, you know, even if you say, I'm Rob Hoover, the dad, you know, people still know you're on the school committee. So I, I, I appreciate the challenges with that.
Just wear a mask to those meetings with the principal. I'm not the person you see in those.
So Peter, you, you and Peter will talk.
I will talk with Peter about it.
Well, I'll talk to Peter now, because I'm.
That's right, talk to Peter, he would, he would love to entertain a conversation with you about to understand exactly what's going on.
He's good to talk with.
Great, oh, I like Peter a lot.
Wonderful, yeah, very helpful. But that, you know, I know any of the principals would, you know, if it affects your child and it's something that you, you know, feel, they would want you to come and talk to them about it, that, you know, rather than necessarily even coming to me, right? Because they wanna have an opportunity to, to work on it, you know, themselves too, so. So thank you, Rob, you know, your, your last meeting, you got to say what you were feeling, it's a good thing.
Go Fig Newtons.
Go Fig Newtons.
Okay, so, the only two things that are left are the superintendent's evaluation and then the school committee's self-evaluation. So I'd like to start off with the self-evaluation. I just wanna thank all of you for getting me the information so quickly, Alana gave it to me like the next day. So thank you. Yeah, but it took some time.
Thank you for putting it together, I know you spend a lot of time and get all this and I.
I was doing homework, my kids would say, what's the homework, do you do it? I'm like, leave me alone. I felt pressure.
Went back to, went back to high school feeling, right?
But what I most enjoyed about compiling all the information that I got was that we're pretty much all on the same page, which is really nice.
It doesn't always happen.
It doesn't always happen, but I think that since I've been on the committee, it's been pretty good, which, which is nice. Because I, I do have a friend that's on the school committee in other town, and she's like, oh my goodness, we don't know what we're gonna face when we go in there, you know, between this one, doesn't like this one, and this, it's, so, I was looking at this, I'm like, wow, it's so nice that I, I really believe that what all of you put on here is what you truly believe. You know, which made me happy. So I just want to just go over the individual ratings that we had to think of, okay? So, and I'm just gonna give a blurb as to what, like, each means to the school committee. So under governance, which, the school committee is a governing body charged with setting the educational goals and objectives for the school system, adopting policies that enable the administration to achieve these goals and objectives, adopting a budget to provide necessary resources, the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent, and the ongoing review and evaluation of the school system's performance and fulfilling its mission. So we all agreed. So I'm going by like strongly agree, agree, disagree. So we all agreed that we pretty much do governance well. You know, as far as the policy is clear, committee's adopted mission statements, it refrains from involvement in the administration, so, agree on that. And then at the end, if, if you wanna say your comments, that would be good.
I object.
I saw that. Operations, so any group or team functions best when the norms, rules, and dynamics are spelled out, easily understood and agreed upon. Aside from certain Massachusetts general laws and Robert's rule of order, the school committee generally develops its own ways of doing things. City chatters and town bylaws may also provide direction for the committee. The more that is discussed upfront, the smoother the process for making decisions can be. So roles of the officers on the committee, new members receiving training, procedures and protocols are published and understood, we all agreed.
Well, and we have the operating protocols right up on the, on the website. Clarifying.
The only, the only thing that I would like to work on is the new members receiving adequate training. It is, it is hard, I felt it, I don't know if you felt it. Everyone's so busy, and all of a sudden you get sworn in, and then the next. Oh, come on Thursday night, and then you sit there and you're like, what are they talking about? So, yeah, that, I mean, that is very intimidating.
Was understanding open meeting law, that I had, that was really, and, that, that was a workshop or something, I got the, I don't remember. They had the town offered a training.
Yes, so I. Oh, on the ethics, the ethics.
And open meeting law.
Ethics is, yeah, that's something else. But they talked about the open, open meeting law.
So much of a surprise, right, but the open meeting law was.
I know, when people all of a sudden look at you like, don't talk, you know, or don't send emails, or. Yeah, I would just eat, CC everybody, just because I figured more communication is better communication. But according to open meeting law, it's really not, because that constitutes deliberation.
In private, rather than.
In private, rather than in public, so I had to. And I always try to answer my emails right away, like I know you do, and pretty much everybody does, but I, that was a big thing with me. I'm like, well, I thought I was just responding to this person, well, only the chair responds to these people, I'm like, oh. So we agreed on the operations end of it. On member relations, so group dynamics and teamwork are an extremely important part of the school committee's success. Members can have strong opinions on issues, yet still remain open-minded and willing to work out differences. How committee members treat each other goes a long way in affecting the ultimate success of the committee as a whole and as individuals. And I'm proud to say that that, we all strongly agreed, that we treat each other with courtesy and respect, we're encouraged to voice opinions, and members respect the will of the majority and support decisions that are made. So I thought that was really great.
Yeah, I think we have a very supportive environment, I think we all, you know, feel that we can be honest and forthright, and, and yet, you know, you know, kind of put downs are just inappropriate.
So committee and superintendent relations, the superintendent is a critical member of the management team implementing school committee policies and leading the school system in the direction set by the school committee. The relationship between the committee and the superintendent is an area that deserves the utmost attention and care. And again, we all strongly agreed that the type and frequency of communications are agreed to in advance. Committee members contact the superintendent when seeking information, and you're always willing to help us out with thinking, so that was great.
Been great.
That's important. That's important.
Very important.
Um, strategic planning and fiscal management, the school committee is accountable to the community for the responsible management of the school system's finances. It is also responsible for providing the resources necessary to enable the school system to perform its mission. Solid planning is needed to maximize short-term and long-term allocation of resources. And we strongly agree that um so that the long-term strategic plan exists, all constituencies of the school district are involved in the um planning process and the committee as a group presents and advocates for the community. And last but not least, community relations, the school committee is the chief advocate for students in the community. As such, it needs to strive for a positive relationship between the community and the school system. The perception of the school system's quality impacts nearly all facets of the system and is an integral component of school committee's success and advocacy. So, we all agree that um we have a public relations plan for the school system, the committee encourages the inclusion of community members and it works cooperatively with other branches of the um government. So, do you have any comments on it? I know, it was very nice. Comments, suggestions? Suggestions as to what we could do? Um, I think the, the one that I thought was the, just the new member training.
That's something maybe I was gonna.
Yes, and I would, um, I, I would be in favor of maybe trying to get together this summer or once a year how we, like we did last summer.
Like we did last year, yeah, the retreat that we did last year was really nice.
It was.
Was a, it was a really good opportunity also.
Team building.
Just want to take this opportunity to say for myself, coming here now at the end of the second year um of my service on this committee, what a positive experience it has been, it's been so educational. Um, and as we have an open seat.
Yes.
I, I, I can't say enough good things about what my experience on this committee has been and I know it's in part to the peo- I owe a lot to the people who sit on this committee for making it such a pleasant experience, but also an educational experience and, and a real sense of being able to contribute to the town. Um, anybody out there who's thinking about it, who might be undecided, I would urge them to step forward because it's, it's a, it's, I can't, I can't think of, you know, you've I had such a distaste for politics, I would never run for a position, but this has been, this has been surprisingly enjoyable.
Oh, that's surprisingly enjoyable, that's good, yes.
I, I would say the, the same thing, it's been a very rewarding experience, I have no regrets at all, I feel like I learned a lot.
Somebody who avoided committees. And has served on many committees in other, in other capacities that were really dysfunctional.
We, um, this committee.
Not this one.
Needs a little male energy.
Yeah.
So, whoever's out there, you know.
Always a good balance.
Get off your butt.
Gender balance is sad.
If possible, but if not, that's okay, we can work with it. It's the individual that's most important and with the individual, you know, that, that wants to be here for the, to work for the best of the, the children and the commu- the school community, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Assume, who has the most positive intention, that's what we want, somebody who has p- very positive intention, male or female. We will welcome you.
Okay, well, again, thanks for getting all that stuff to me in a timely manner, it was, it was so.
I just put it together.
Oh, we have to vote.
You vote to approve it.
Who got self-evaluations, did you put it in there for me?
I did, but you know what, maybe I, oh, yep, up, up on the top.
Did you?
Middle of the second page.
Middle of the second page.
B, B.
Oh, okay, so, um, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the school committee's self-evaluation is presented.
So moved.
Second discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now on, so again, thanks, it was, it was, it was really nice looking at it and I'll give that to you.
Thanks for putting it together, Barbie, it is, it is hard sometimes to take everybody's ideas and synthesize them and
Yeah.
Numbers help a little, but.
Num- yeah, Laura was great in getting me that spreadsheet, so that was good, I love Excel now. I used to be afraid of it, now I love it, because I'm not a math person, so it does it all for you.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of cool.
Even if there's only twos and threes. Isn't that sad? Okay, so on to the superintendent's evaluation, which that too was a really positive experience for me, I thought it was. Um, the new process, I liked it.
Good.
Um, I just thought it was clearer. You know, I just thought that, um, and what you provided all of us, instead of like you had said, I can, I can give you as much as you want.
I was just trying to do the bullets, yeah.
The bullets were perfect, the cover letter, you know, that just explained everything, the smiley holes, I just, I found that very helpful.
Absolutely.
And then meeting with you, of course, our meeting got cut a little short because we had the fire drill, but that's okay.
We had a fire drill.
So, what I will do is I will just um bullet the different um categories and then I just took some of your quotes um out and, and I'll discuss those and then at the end, if you want to just, you know, say whatever you'd like to say in your own words, that would be great, okay? Um, so, the overall review, I'll start off with that, you received three proficient and two exemplary.
Okay.
So, you would be proficient.
That's fine, thank you.
Um, the progress towards goals, you scored significant progress, met or exceeded with only one some progress.
Okay.
Which was under student learning goals.
Okay.
Um, some of the overall comments regarding you as a superintendent, I just want to say that um one individual said an area of increased focus is student achievement. Results that have been provided, significant improvement in the professional practice goal related to communications. Um, Carol has been faced with extraordinary circumstances this year due to contaminated soil findings at the site of the new Pembroke School and at the new turf field location, as the district's leader, she made sure the correct information went out to the community as well as the staff at Pembroke. She made sure she understood the complexity of the issue in order to bring the correct information to the public. Uh, the superintendent has a clear vision that aligns with the mission and strategic goals of the school committee and the district. Her priority is the improvement of instruction for all students. Carol has risen to all challenges with her characteristic can-do and let's take this opportunity to make things better attitude that keeps our district moving forward. Uh, you're a powerful leader who demonstrates a very savvy understanding of current initiatives and public education and the data that you present are extremely convincing of her ability to effectively lead the Georgetown schools, thank you.
Which I thought was very.
Um, under instructional leadership, you receive four proficient and one exemplary. Some comments where Carol was instrumental in forming the vertical team approach, constant monitoring of students' achievements at every level ensure that we are meeting the needs of all students. Um, Carol and her administrative team are working hard to align our district frameworks to meet and exceed the new standards. New vertical teams in English, language arts, math and science are collaborating to build consistently rigorous and relevant curriculums to prepare our students for future success in achieving college and career readiness. Uh, management operations, three proficient, two exemplary. Uh, your philosophy of continuous improvement plus her highly collaborative style of leadership have led to exceptional results, supporting and enabling the entire administrative staff to operate at an amazing level of effective mani- uh engagement. You have done a great job with the transition plan from Hurley to Pembroke. You've been instrumental in keeping the plans alive for a joint maintenance department between the town and the schools. You have formed a great relationship across all town boards and has fostered the philosophy of nothing is out of reach. Uh, you're com- you, you are to be commended for your ability to make extremely good use of district resources to enhance our schools. Uh, we have made satisfactory progress in the areas of wellness and technology, recognizing budget restrictions in the area of technology specifically. We continue to make positive strides in the area of wellness with the most impact in twenty fourteen.
Yeah. For making progress.
Uh, family and community engagement, three proficient, two exemplary. Um, this is an area where Carol consistently exceeds expectations, she is committed to the district as well as the community as evidenced by her ongoing involvement in community events. She is a strong communicator with the institutional knowledge that gives her credibility. Um, I am certain that few superintendents are as engaged and participatory in both school and community events as Carol is, I agree with that. Um, she effectively builds relationships with her high level of visibil- visibility within the community and at major events and town meetings. Uh, you've taken the public relations bull by the horn this year and activated a wonderful and accessible blog, facilitated an active Facebook page and has faithfully kept the community well informed regarding an unfortunate arsenic in the soil problem.
Yes.
Um, Carol is a staple in our community. Seldom is she not available for all community events, it's a pleasure to see her participate selflessly. Um, under professional culture, two proficient, three exemplary. Uh, you are a creative and inspirational leader with a get-it-done attitude and the aptitude to work well in a fast-paced environment. Um, in years past, Carol has been told she needs to delegate more in order to take a few things off her plate. She recruited two co-chiefs for the health and wellness committee that have worked great together, which brought a rejuvenation to the committee that was needed.
They're, they're amazing.
Yeah. So, again, it was a pleasure reading everything that, that you wrote, I think you'll enjoy, you know.
I, I, I would love to see the individuals.
Take a look, yeah, take a look at them. Um, do you want to say anything specifically or?
Well, Carol, I'll just add what I thought was missing from the packet that you gave us, that the, one of the things that I really um appreciated about the evaluation form was the lists of, below, of what you might provide to support and supporting evidence.
Yeah.
And, and consistently in each of the categories, there were things that were missing and so it spoke to me about um if those things were made available and I have, that that would contribute to this com- this committee's ability um to do a, a stronger assessment of, of your work, so, our, I feel, and we talked about this, how and on, there's a level at which um I feel there's information missing, which is, you know, how do people i- within the schools feel about your leadership? How do people in the community and there's, there's, that one of the, in each of the categories was suggested a staff and survey from each of the schools and also a community survey that would give this committee information about how people, you know, what perceive you, um, what, what they feel your strengths are, what they feel they would like to see. And I think that that would be really interesting information and useful information.
Yeah, that's coming actually, the, the process, the state process calls for um a, a, a rolling out of
Mm-hmm.
Community surveys, uh, the principals will have to do the same thing, the other administrators will have to do the same thing. So, that's part of the process going forward.
Right, and it, it makes sense to me that that would be part of the process and I look forward to it, I think that, you know, it's just one of those things, like when we see, we see this piece and what I feel like I sit here and I see is phenomenal and I think I've, I've communicated that to you, that, that, but there's, there's, I don't see your leadership from the perspective of a faculty member at one of the schools or, I don't, I have no, I have no access to that information.
Right, exactly.
So, it's, it feels like, like we're making this assessment of you, evaluation minus a really big piece of information in the absence of that information and I might infer what that assessment would be based on what we see happening in the student outcomes. But still, to me, it feels like there's a hole in the, in the information, so it's, that, that would be one piece of, as that comes forward, I think we would have just a more well-rounded um evaluation.
Sure.
Well, I, I agree that the, the district and I, we are working on a district satisfaction survey, that's been one of your, your goals and I know that's really important to you and, and we will make that happen and I really appreciate how hard you've been working on, on the public relations end of, of things and really communicating with the community and, and, you know, giving them important information, both the good, the bad, the ugly, all of it that we, that we have to give and soliciting it and, you know, I, we do take some um very, some good school surveys as we were talking about earlier in the.
Yeah, the principals who really.
In the meeting, but yes, a, a basic, a district satisfaction survey and some district satisfaction surveys do include the, the staff and, and the teachers and that would be all
They do.
Interesting information, but, you know, as I've, I've seen your leadership evolve over the past seven years, I, I just, I, I'm so delighted with the direction this district is, is moving in, in terms of, on, on so many levels. You know, in terms of curriculum, in terms of student outcome, in terms of the, the sense of um, of community, you know, uh, both on, on the parent level but also at the administrative level and, and the teachers that I've spoken with, um, you know, I've um, you know, and, and I have spoken with a lot of teachers because I, having three children in, in the district and I, I've been through every school now and, and that's, you know, given me a, a perspective of, of positive change and this is such an exciting time, you know, if there was um areas that I, I did rate you proficient and rather than exemplary, it's, it's because, it seems, there's, there's a big plan and, and it hasn't all un- unfolded yet. I mean, there's a lot that were, and that's exciting, that provides, you know, an opportunity for really wonderful things to continue to happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I just, I appreciate so much, you know, what, what you've done and in terms of building relationships, you know, with, with the town, with different town committees and, and working, y- y- you know, your presence um is, is so helpful at, at so many different kinds of events, you know, I just, and the way you speak up and articulate the issues and, and demonstrate your in-depth understanding and I'm always, you know, I'm so relieved when, when people ask questions at different meetings and you have the answers and you had the real true good, you know, answers and, and so I'm just, I'm very appreciative of everything you, you give this district, so, thank you.
I think just a couple of things come up to me, I'm not gonna repeat anything that I've just heard, um. I think of um what proficient and exemplary, I, I get, I think I would have been one of those teachers that would have been real, would have been hard for me to give exemplaries, I mean, you really would have had, that's perfection, so even though I gave you some, I didn't in all the cases.
I'm fine with it, we, we've been talking to the teachers about how and the state is really hammering this, that proficient is excellent.
It's pretty damn good, exactly.
You read the descriptions and the, and the, um, in the fran- in the benchmarks, you know, you can see, you know, if, if we're doing a proficient job, it's not just an average job, you know, but we're so conditioned that if there's something at the top that exempt, it's gotta be exemplary and I think that's one of the weaknesses of the frame, of the, of the work uh that the state has done on this is it's really not clear in their definition what the difference between proficient and exemplary is, that they'll say um that you're able to model or teach it to others is what makes you exemplary and, and I don't think we agree with that. We, we're, we're all always a little fuzzy about that, like, you know, sometimes if it's in the case of a teacher, they don't have a chance to demonstrate or model it. You know, so how do you know that they could or would?
Right.
So, I, you know, I think we've been talking about how proficiency is what we, what we're striving to reach and certainly if there are some areas, as you're pointing out, that you feel, you know, go above and beyond that, that is really consistently the case, you know, and it, and it reaches a higher level than just the proficient, then, you know, that's, that's what we expect.
The o- the other thing that I wanted to say is that it's really hard for me to tease apart the evaluation of you from.
Everyone else, well, I agree with that.
And, and um, uh, you know, what I want to say about that is, you know, the appointments of these people that you've, that you've surrounded yourself with, you know, tip of the hat goes to you for that. Um, but I have to also, I just can't separate them, you know, Peter's not here and Dawn is not here and to you three and to Joan and Laura, yourself, you know, you guys, you guys are just, um, you're the, you're the foundation of it all.
They make it happen every day.
It's a well-oiled machine that really works.
You all get an exemplar in my book there. Pass that on to Peter.
I will, I will for sure pass that on, I will for sure pass.
Well, I just wanted to read what proficient, what we, what we saw as proficient and exemplary. So, proficient practice is understood to be fully satisfactory, this is the rigorous expected level of performance, that's proficient. Exemplary is a rating exemplary indicates that the practice significantly exceeds proficient and could serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide.
So, I, you know, very grateful, you know, for any of those ratings because I, you know, I, I think we all, you know, we all have the benefit of working in a great district in a great town, you know, and, and we always have more to learn and I learned.
in a great town, you know, and, and we always have more to learn and I learn every day. But one of the things that I learned, administration 101, is you hire well. If you want to be successful, you surround yourself with people who don't think just like you. But people who are smart and bright and talented and dedicated to the same mission that you feel like you, we, in the direction we need to go. And I think that, that I feel very, you know, w- we have disagreements, you know, we, we don't agree on a hundred percent of things, but you know what? Through the disagreement often comes some new way of thinking, you know, pushes everybody's thinking to push the envelope. Um, and, and, and I couldn't say it better, Rob, it, it, any, any rating you do of me, it, you know, has, it, it's not just me doing it. And just when I said that in my memo to you, you know, we all work together. It, you know, it, it's, it's, yes, the leadership does provide some strategic, some, makes some strategic things happen. Um, but it's really the, the people part of the work that I am driven by. I love the instruction. That's my, that's been my world for thirty-five years. But my favorite thing is the people part because I don't believe you can, the instructions going anywhere if you don't have.
Well.
That's not, that's not obvious.
I also want to say.
So that's, you know, for people to recognize that is important.
You can surround yourself with the best people, but if you talk the talk but don't walk the walk, they're not going to follow.
That's right.
They're not going to, they're not going to live out to their highest ability. And so I think when you have such, I, I, that's, that's the leadership you provide.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I'm grateful for your comments. I appreciated the opportunity to meet individually with you. You know, we had some great conversations. I learned a lot about what matters to you and, you know, what you see in me and the things that, you know, I could work on and will continue to work on. Next year, I really feel strongly that the, a big part of the work along with doing the goals, because many of these goals, as you saw, were two-year goals. Um, you know, the, the transition, just, just being, just making that, that go well and helping people to, to do that. And then just the continuation with the communications, you know, what our, our, do we have our pulse on really what people are, are interested or need and want to know more about? Are, is there a way that they, they can be able to feel like they approach us uh, so that, um, there's an exchange of information on both sides and an exchange of, of good ideas? Cause we're all on the same team.
Absolutely.
We may not always agree to do it the same way, but we are all on the same team.
And I would like to add, if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Exactly. You don't have to throw the baby out with the bath. All, all those expressions we all know, right? Um, but that's, part of that is, it's like taking a lot of puzzles and trying to figure out which pieces fit where. Not every piece is the same size. Not every piece is going to have the same value. And that's, that's really the art of what we're always trying to do. And that's why we have a strategic plan. I was telling Julie the other day, when I was thinking about, you know, what I was going to put down for the bullets, right? First thing I did is I went and looked at the strategic plan. And I was so excited when I looked at it. I'm like, this, we're doing it. This is what we said we're going to do and we're doing it. And as I said, it's us together. It's not, you know, what is the word? There's no I in team, right? So, you know, but I am grateful for the chance to work here. This is going to be my eighth year. I can't believe it. Uh, and, uh.
Fortunate to have you.
And, uh, you know, we, we have stability in our administrative team now, which is really important. And a, a good diverse, you know, culture that thinks in very real and creative ways. And, you know, we're, good things are going to continue to happen as a result of all of our work. You know, and it is very, for superintendents, when I go to superintendent's meetings, and most of the discussion is about negative things that are going on. Either, you know, the state's the first, you know, whipping boy now, but, but yeah, after that, the, the next one is the school committees that they work with. I have to say, so I, I, I don't ever have to say, you know.
Would there ever be an evaluation for the administration, administration to evaluate the school committee members?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think so, but, well, actually, I, no, because you get, no, you get evaluated by yourselves and the community.
And the community, they reelect you or not.
We don't, we don't, yeah, no, we don't get to evaluate you. Um, but you know, I think, but it would, it would be interesting. Um, but I have to say that I am not in that situation, haven't been since I've been here. Actually wasn't really in Quabog either.
I hope that there's ongoing communication and that you would tell us if you think that we could be more helpful in another way.
Oh, oh, absolutely. Abs- absolutely. And what I've appreciated is we can have a com- we can have a dialogue about, you know, just, just, you know, what, what we, what, how we might perceive something or some questions we might have one another. And that's, that's fine, you know. I mean, at the end of the day, it isn't about them versus us.
Right.
And we don't have that approach here in Georgetown and the community is very lucky. You know, there always are people sit there and say, oh, how can the school committee and the school superintendent get along so well? But something is not right with that. And I, I always, I always want to push back and say, well, what's right with people arguing in public about things that, you know, uh, what's, what's right with people being on a different page? If you're going to do that, you don't, why are you working together? Right? So disagreements, fine, you know, and discourse, you know, for Rob to bring that up and, you know, we had a conversation about it and, you know, that's all good. That's all good. But it, it isn't in everybody's best interest for everybody to be in, in an embattled state. It's not healthy to put that negative energy.
I'm afraid it sells a lot of papers though.
It does sell a lot of papers, but if, if we're talking about what I'm interested in is doing real work. I'm interested in real results, real change. And if, if that, if that's what we're serious about, then there's a way to do that. And there's a way to do that right. And, uh, you know, I feel like we're on a good path. So again, I'm grateful for your comments and your candor. And, uh, it's my pleasure. You know, it's my pleasure, pleasure and privilege to work here.
That's great.
You have to go.
Thank you.
You have to vote.
Jones are vote reminders.
Well, cause Laura's going to say it to my ear in a minute.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that is, um, it for the evening.
I have, I have something.
Oh, you do?
Sorry, yes. I have an invoice. Yeah, for the, um.
This is one you should be expecting from Jim Lucker.
Oh, from what?
The meeting.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah. Okay. So the chair will entertain. I'm just looking at the amount. So the two six, oh, okay. I was, I was expecting five hundred.
That was for the meeting and then reimbursable expenses.
Yeah, right. Okay. So the ch- the chair will. Yeah.
Absolutely.
While we're looking, can I just ask, have we heard anything?
No, I was just thinking the same thing, like, oh, damn.
Should I have heard today?
That's not something we should bring up at nine fifteen. It was Friday. It was Friday that he was hoping to have something.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah.
So we don't have.
But nothing, nothing that I'm aware of.
Um, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the invoice number eight five six five from Greensale Environmental, Inc. in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ten cents, which includes the attendance in a meeting for five hundred dollars and lab analysis in the amount of two sixty-nine ten as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, um, the meeting is adjourned at nine fifteen. We will not, we will be going into executive session under chapter thirty-eight, um, section twenty-one for negotiations purposes. Have a good night.